If we could all stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody. The weather's finally changed to winters. The last couple of days have been pretty cold out there, and I think we're in for a long winter. Jenny, if you can take the roll.
Councilmember Thorson?
Here.
Councilmember Peterson, here. Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Here. Coram is present. This time, motion to adopt the agenda, but I'd like to, if I could, move item E under, or item F under City Business and move it to the front of A just because we have someone here that doesn't have to wait the whole meeting to handle that. So if I can move her up to item A, that'd be, that'd be good. If that's okay, motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
By Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, we do have one presentation, and I'd like to welcome up Adam Siddler from North Haven Church, if you can come up to the podium, and also our police chief. And we have a little program that was started by North Haven Church with Adam and maybe make a few comments in regards to what's going on.
We just met earlier.
Welcome.
Yeah, I could see you. So yeah, we have been talking with Mayor Furlong for a while now and talking about how it is that we can mobilize our faith organizations in the community to help meet all the desperate needs that are in our community, be more tangibly aware and involved and invested. And so this is just one aspect of what it is that we're hoping to be able to do in the months and years to come. But what we did is we mobilized as many churches as we could over the course of the last month, and specifically Premier Bank. I know some people think of banks as a church, but it-
At the last minute, we threw that in there.
Christ Lutheran Church, St. Peters, North Haven, of course, Redeeming Love and North Presbyterian have all donated money, $2,500 to be exact, 2,500, and put them in form of Cub gift cards that we wanted to be able to equip police officers with, and we hope to be able to maintain this so that you guys, I mean, you're on the front lines and you're interacting with people that we don't always see, you know, on a day-to-day basis. And for you to be able to have a tangible means to be able to bless people, especially over this Christmas season, you know, that, we wanted to gift that to you and to your officers and so you can gift others, so.
I greatly appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you very much, yeah.
I just want to say, I mean, you mentioned it, absolutely, we have the ability as police officers to meet people in all different walks of life, including those in the greatest need, and this will absolutely help us help them this time of year. So greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, you bet.
Thanks again.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks.
Maybe Adam, maybe Adam, just mention kind of what's been going on the last year in regards to the churches and how you've communicated and how you've gotten organized a little bit over the last year?
Yeah, you know, we're inching more and more to developing those relationships. So now, I've been a senior pastor here at this church, now, North Haven, for two and a half years. I picked the right time, right, to lead a church in the midst of COVID. But many churches are aware of the needs that exist in our community. But churches can often feel like, faith organizations can feel kind of like alone and isolated. And so what we're trying to do is band together in a way and not only let each other know that we're there, but figure out tangible ways that, like I said, we can address these needs. So we are in the process of developing an opportunity for faith leaders in our adjacent community to come together, hopefully in February of 2022, to begin not only introducing ourselves to one another, develop those relationships, but also talk about, okay, what are the needs in our community? How are we as individual churches addressing these needs? And then, how much greater can we be advocates for change in this community by banding together? And what would that look like? So I'm really excited. Mayor Furlong has been a great advocate in helping me mobilize this as well, and we're just hoping for connection and interest and excitement and making a difference, so.
Thank you. Look forward to the relationship. And now you met the police chief and-
Never thought the day would come.
So thank you, and I know it's going to be a good program, you know, during this, this time, this season. So thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. So at this time, the consent agenda, and that is the November 16th workshop minutes, the November 16th regular meeting minutes, the November 16th HRA meeting minutes, the November 16th closed meeting minutes, the November 18th special meeting minutes, general claims of $916,469.89, the HRA claims of $44,851.77, the city manager employment agreement, the 2022 city council meeting calendar, the North Suburban Access Professional Technical Services Agreement, the Police Vehicle Replacement CIP Funds, the Notice to Declare Dog Non-Dangerous, the Records Management System Replacement in City Hall Amplifier for Emergency Communications, the Police Vehicle Agreement in Dakota County Technical College, approved the termination of the financial suite software services under the Open Gov contract, building permit report for November 2021, the resolution approving acceptance of donations received November of 2021, and the last, which is the letter R of all this, is towards zero death TDZD grant agreement. So at this time, if a council member would like to pull an item, I know it's a long consent agenda, but if somebody would like to pull an item at this time, they can do so. Councilmember Thorson?
Well, first, I just want to say I'm a little disappointed we couldn't make it at least to Z on this. But good try, maybe, you know, there's always a next year, no. Just I, J, and K, those three items?
It's like a puzzle here. So we'll add item I, and that'll be-
G?
That'll be-
On consent.
I on-
Yeah, I on the-
City Business. J will be J, and K will be K, under City Business and Action Items.
Mayor, can we move those up just a bit?
And we- So we will move those- Say that again?
Can we move those to B, C, and D behind A, which is-
Which items? So we're moving item-
I, J, and K.
We're moving F to A, that's the TIF, that's for Michaela. We're moving that to A.
Yep. I to B.
And we want to move I to B.
J to C.
J to C, and K to D. Okay? Just want to get my order here in place. Okay. It's a long, it's a long list here. So at this time, a motion to approve the consent agenda without those items.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. I just want to mention that Laura is here from the person with the dog, and if anybody had any questions, but I think Chief, you put something together for the packet that explained why, why we're doing this. So Laura, you're good, have your dog non-dangerous. So thank you for showing up. This time, meeting open to the public, and I have three. First one is RT with Community Center. Welcome, RT.
Thank you. Don't have much for you this evening, just wanted to honestly say thank you. Brian, the past couple of days, got some of the ballast fix. And also, most importantly, Ron from Public Works. Last night, the heat went out in the gym area, and he was literally on the roof till like midnight, working on it, and then working with the contractor that came in today, and really appreciate his time and his effort to ensure that we can have a gym that's more than 55 degrees. So, but I really appreciate that.
They sweat a lot in the gym, don't they?
They do. Create a lot. So the kids were, it wasn't, the issue wasn't the kids, it was the coaches that were wearing their cat, their coats and their hats. And, but thank you very much for working on that. And then, look forward to continuing to finish this out with the committee and Mr. Thorson here behind me, who was awesome in our last meeting like usual, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Schmall, amended agenda, script of this levy and underground electric service. Welcome, John. If we can keep it to around three minutes, that'd be, that'd be great.
Oh, yes. John Schmall, 2750 Chisholm Avenue. The first one is one that keeps showing up all the time. We have an amended agenda, and we have no indication in the amended agenda as to what the amendment was. Now, maybe it is considered that all residents have two screens the size that they have at Wall Street, and you can go here, 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 here. Where's the change? Where's the change? Just indicate what the new item is. It happened to be R. But what would it take just to somehow indicate, maybe in red, maybe red isn't available? Well, I don't know. Or maybe this is a bridge too far, and I ought to just give it up. Any idea? Should I give it up? It happens. No, it happens, and it happens, and it happens, and it happens.
It happens, and I know that staff is working on trying to make it as accountable as they can. They're doing their best they can, John.
All right.
It may not be the best for you, but they are doing the best that they can.
Well, it should be not the best for the rest of the residents.
I think they're doing the best that they can.
Oh, well, I hope so. Item number two is RT once said in many, many presentations that he had, he referred to the money that was going to be taken from the solid waste fund and put into the White Elephant CC Community Center as a levy. It's not a levy. A levy is done in the bright sunlight. It has hearings, all those other things. When you take it from an enterprise fund and just use it the way you were intending, I guess you're not intending on doing it anymore. Who knows what you're intending on doing? But it's not a levy. So I'm sorry, RT, it's not a levy. And the last item that I had, there were multiple electronic newsletters that brought up the case of the underground service being put in in the northeast part of the city, Beam Avenue, all the way through there. For background, I happen to use that route to go to my favorite store, Fleet Farm. And back three years ago, when they were doing the CIP from hell on Lake Boulevard, you all remember Lake Boulevard, they also put in new conduit underground at the same time. I noticed when they were doing this, there were three conduits, two gray, one orange. So I have to ask, why the orange stopped? I didn't talk to any city employees. I talked to the people that were burying the conduit. I said, what's the orange? And they said, communications. And I said, what communications? Oh, it could be many things. So I thought at that time, there might have been an extra charge for this. And if you didn't know what you're going to do with it, why are you putting it in the ground? And the individual I was talking to, employee of the contractor, said, it really doesn't cost that much to put in another conduit. It's, you know, we got to bear, we got to dig it through with those rods. It doesn't cost that much to put in another conduit. Probably just the, the cost of the conduit itself. So I backed off. You never heard from me. If it's free, who cares what you're doing? In the Beam area in the northeast part of the city, there was, there's only two conduits. There's no three conduits. There's no orange conduit. I had the opportunity on the way to Fleet Farm to catch some of the, the utility workers and said, stopped and said to the group that I was able to talk to, where's the orange conduit? And they looked at me like I was from outer space, but it just happened to have another truck pull up with a utility employee. He was a little more knowledgeable. And I said, the orange conduit, where does it, oh, we're not putting that in. How come? I don't know. We just do what is in the plan. I don't know why we don't do, put the orange conduit in. So an additional question, I said, the poles in the backyards, are they going to be taken out? No, they're not going to be taken out. Why is that? Because the electric service is still going to be on the poles. Oh, well, that seems strange. I have underground service, goes from the street to the meter on the house. It doesn't go to poles. So question is, will the residents in that area, since the poles are still in the backyard, will they get the privilege of paying the extra $2 or $3 for underground service when they really don't have it?
I don't think they will. It won't be underground.
Is it true, they won't be paying that?
That's true.
That is true. Okay. But why no communication conduit? Thank you.
Oh, John, a lot of times when you ask us questions, we bring it to staff, and they are able to help you, not at the meeting here, but it can be after the meeting.
Wait for it, then.
Okay, good. Thank you. We do have two public hearings, and I'll turn it over to interim city manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Whoop, do we have one more?
Oh, I do. I'm sorry. I put the wrong, I put them both away. Sorry, David. We have Dave Nelson. Welcome, and global warming.
Dave Nelson, 2574 Fourth Avenue East. I know last month, everybody, all month long, heard about global warming, and it is here.
It's cold outside right now, though.
Well, open your door and heat outside. Anyway, North St. Paul has jumped on the bandwagon, Brian. You know, you, you guys put the windmill in and at the generator, and you also have solar where you can get green on your utility bill. I put solar in at my place. I was the first one in North St. Paul, plus there was another five other people that put it on their place, which was a good return because the bank was paying me one-half of 1%, and if you average mine out for the year, I'm getting 24 cents on the dollar roughly back each month, if you average it out. But there's, I went a little bit farther. A battery-operated lawnmower. I was going to try one out. I went with it, and I'm surprised it cuts, the motor spins about a third faster than a gas engine will. And you get a better cut, your lawn looks nice, you're not polluting the air, because your lawnmower, if you can, if you, right now, the car is with the catalytic converter, if you take your lawnmower and compare, and compare the exhaust from that and your car, that lawnmower is polluting more than your car. California is banning some of the gas engines that are going to be going to electric, or if I took my gas engine and went to California, they would not accept it. I couldn't use it there. But I mean, in the spring, Home Depot, I like to put a plug in for them because they have Toro Days where they give you another $50 off the list price of the electric mower and that. So you just have to watch when they have the Toro Days. And also, if you're a veteran and you carry a VA card, you get another 10% off, no matter if it's on sale or what. And I tried it out with the leaves and the bagger. I could not believe how it picked up the leaves. So if you can't afford something else, or say you go with the city of North St. Paul so much a month just to get green energy, if nothing else, this Christmas, talk to Santa, see if he can drop off a battery-powered lawnmower for you.
Oh, David, they also have snow blowers, battery-operated.
Okay, yeah. I never, never looked at that.
What? You haven't looked at that yet?
I got a shovel that is, that's not battery-powered.
Well, thank you, David.
But anyway, it beats having a goat.
Yeah, right. Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we do have a public hearing, and I'll turn it over to interim city manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. First up is the Burwell addition preliminary and final plat. We have Brandy here from WSB to discuss that for us.
Good evening, Mayor and-
Welcome.
City Council. Thanks for the introduction. I do have a brief PowerPoint presentation for you.
In the history, this goes on, how long ago, how many years? In fact, I think the surveyor came out of retirement because he worked on it years ago, so.
Yeah, I have it in my notes that it was about 15 years ago as well.
Wow.
So this Burwell addition is a city-initiated project where the city submitted a land registration to Ramsey County to clarify the ownership of the block between Margaret Charles Sepulvede Highway 20, or Highway 36, which is the block that we're in right now at City Hall. The existing lot configuration, which you can see on the screen, is the result of numerous plats and land conveyances in the past. As you can see, lot lines overlap existing structures and Centennial Drive is not reflected accurately. To remedy the lot line issues, the city entered into a stipulation agreement with the other property owners on this block that will legally clear up the titles for each property owner. The plats, which are before you tonight, are the legal mechanism to map the legal descriptions in that stipulation agreement. And in addition to clearing up the ownership, the plating process also establishes the right of way for Centennial Drive. So this project is a little bit different than a typical plating process in that there is no subdivision involved. In fact, per state law, lot consolidations such as this are not subject to a city's subdivision review authority. So there are no new buildings and no public infrastructure proposed with this plat. It was brought forward to the Plan Commission last Thursday as a matter of procedure. They reviewed the zoning against the plat, and there are some existing non-conformities that will continue. And we consulted with Sorin, the city attorney, on that, and we were assured that because this simply memorializes the existing ownership, that veriances are not required. Staff submitted public hearing notices for the Plan Commission and City Council meeting tonight to the Star Tribune. Owners within 350 feet of the plat were sent a notification letter in the mail, and we also notified Ramsey County, the Minnesota Department of Transportation, and the DNR. Plan Commission last week recommended approval of the Burwell preliminary plat, and staff also recommends council approval tonight. And that is all.
Okay, any questions? What is your first name again? I'm sorry.
Brandy.
Brandy. Any questions for Brandy? If not, we'll open the public hearing up at 7:06 here. Is there anybody on Zoom or in the public that would like to address the council in regards to this? Nothing? Nobody in the council here, so we'll close the public hearing at this time. And then the motion will be for a resolution to approve the Burwell addition preliminary and final plat. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson. Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, and that cleans up that title. And Sorin, I'm sure you'll take that and- Okay, we have another public hearing. I'll turn it over to interim city manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up is the-
Thank you, Brandy.
Truth and taxation hearing, dealing with the 2022 tax levy and budget. We'll turn that over to Finance Director Dan Winnick.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. This is the annual truth and taxation presentation. So on an annual basis, held during a very specific time of the year, each city, county, school district, taxing authority must have a truth and taxation hearing in which the residents of the community have an opportunity to ask questions and weigh in their concerns and raise issues regarding the upcoming levy. The purpose of this meeting, we're going to provide an opportunity for residents to ask questions, to learn about the city budget and tax levy. The presentation will cover why tax bills change, the property tax in Minnesota, the 2022 truth and taxation notice, preliminary evaluation changes, the city 2022 levy highlights, budget highlights, and the city general fund and debt budgets, and the city property tax levy, HRA and EDA property tax levy, additional information, questions and comments. And so what do we, why do we, why do property taxes change? There can be a number of factors why they change. The changes can be in market values. They can be levies at various jurisdictions. They can be debt issuance, special assessments, voter-approved referendums, changes in state and federal mandates, changes in aid and revenue from state and federal governments, and state legislative changes. The property tax in Minnesota, the county assessor determines the property values in the year prior to the taxes being paid. The city sets preliminary levy by September. Other taxing districts, county and school districts also set their own levies. Proposed property tax notices are mailed by county in the month of November. City holds truth and taxation public hearings by December, and property taxes are finalized for the following year. So when we look at the, our property tax, the projected changes in the 2021 payable 2022 for a median value house is increased, the value is increased to $237,150 from 230 to 3.1% increase. Countywide, the median value changed from 254 to 245, a 3.5. So you can see that the city is, is holding right there on the overall residential median value of a, of a home. And the residential properties are seeing the largest gains. So the shift in the property taxes because of the value increases are more substantial in residential properties versus commercial and apartments. A 2022 sample calculation of just the city's portion, if we take that median home value at $237,150, you take out the homestead market value exclusion, you have a taxable market value of $221,000. The class rate, to get to a net tax capacity of 2,213, with a proposed tax rate, the- proposed tax rate, the city portion of the property taxes will be $972,000. This is assuming that the city passes its proposed 5.99% increase in the city taxes, in the city levy. The truth and taxation notice. There's a different terminology. There's a market value, which is referring to the assessed value determined by the Ramsey County Assessor's Office. There's a market value exclusion, which refers to the homestead market value that's excluded from, in the calculation of property taxes. There's a net tax capacity, which is delivered by multiplying the class rates by taxable market value, and is a tax base used for levies other than most referendum levies. There's referendum market value, which is based upon the market value. There's the net tax capacity levy, that is the property tax levy applied to the net tax capacity tax base. This amount does not include the portion of the levy that comes from fiscal disparities. And then there's the referendum market value, is the property tax levy applied to the referendum market value tax base. This amount does not include the portion of the levy that comes from fiscal disparities. This is kind of an example of the truth and taxation notice that residents had received. You can see that there, in the upper right-hand corner, there's evaluation and classification. It'll get, give values for both 2021 and 2022. It'll also include the homestead exclusion value and the taxable market value of the property, and also the classification, property classification of being a residential homestead. The truth and taxation notice also will show on the bottom portion, it'll show the taxes for, the estimated taxes for all of the jurisdictions that that property lies in. And it does not include if there's any voter-approved referendums in a current year, which the city had no referendums. And it includes both the estimated and taxable values, as I've, as I had talked about, which was in the upper right-hand corner. And this, this property that I had pulled up had a value in 2021 of 233.5. In 2022, 239, 200. You can see the exclusion drops down because that actually phases out over time up to a value, it's totally, completely phased out at $414,000 of a value. This, this slide here will illustrate kind of that phasing out of the market value exclusion. Again, another impact, why if the values are going up, by the property tax will go up not only in addition to if there's an increase in levy, but also in the market value, but also because of the reduction in the market value exclusion. This illustration, using the same property that you saw before, you'll see that it'll show all the jurisdictions, the changes of tax from 2021 to 2022. In this illustration, it'll show that Ramsey County, including the regional authority, would go up 3.74%, North St. Paul, 6.05%, school districts, 622, 1.47%, and metropolitan special taxing districts, 5.88%. All in all, the tax actually goes up 3.9%. The distribution of the taxes, you can see that 34% is going to Ramsey County. City of St. Paul's approximately 32% of the tax bill. The school district is 29%, and the other taxing authorities, 5%. Preliminary evaluation changes, you can see that for the city of North St. Paul, our market values, our total estimated market values have increased 4.6%. On the left-hand side, on the right-hand side, the estimated market value for a residential property has increased 3.1%. This'll kind of show a little bit more, some information of the different property types of residential, apartments, commercial, and industrial. And it'll show how the median values from 20, pay 21, and 21 to pay 22 have changed. You can see residential has increased the 3.1% on the median value. All the median values on apartments, commercial, and industrial for the city of North St. Paul have actually decreased. Again, this is contributing to the shift of being more of a burden on the residential properties. Getting into the levy highlights, the city's 2022 levy is, right now, is set at 5.99% or $328,850 increase from 2021. The cities in towns and Ramsey County averaged a 6.74% increase. Cities in the state of Minnesota averaged a 6.6% increase. So we are not out of line for what we're looking at. In addition, as a reminder to city council, that city council last year passed a 0% levy increase. Since 2009, the city's average annual levy increase has been 5.4%. Again, from a historical standpoint, the 5.99% that you work so hard on building the budget this year is, again, not out of line. The HRA and the EDA preliminary levies are each increasing 8.78%. That's a combined increase of $32,000. That is the maximum that we can levy based on state statute. Some of the budget highlights, our general fund budget actually is increasing, 5.86% or $438,000. Some of the major changes, there are some staff additions on the police, public works, amounting to approximately $249,000. COLA step increases, benefit increases amounted to $224,000, and reductions, a transfer out of the general fund of $50,000. Debt budget decreased a little over 10% or $153,000. That was achieved through issuing the refunding bonds in 2021 to reduce the costs, and then also calling the 2012 A refunding bonds early. This is, this budget also includes an investment in our infrastructure. There's, the plan is to invest over $9 million in a new city infrastructure to be completed in 2022 and 2023. By decreasing that budget, the, by recalling the bonds and refunding the bonds, has actually allowed us to build that capacity to go out in debt and still make a 10% reduction and be able to do the $9.2 million. Also, this budget shows that there's a commitment to the city-operated public safety, increase the public, or the police complement by 1.725 FTE, and it's a continuation of a balanced budget. In other words, we're not using any fund balance in the general fund to subsidize this budget. So we can look at the North St. Paul levy components. There's both the general fund and the debt. And you can see how we've increased the general fund $482,000. The debt's been reduced by approximately $154, increasing the levy $328,000 or the 5.99%. You can see the composition, as you've seen the levies from 2009 all the way to 2022, showing that we'll have a levy of 5.8 million comprised of those two components. This will show the general fund here, of showing all of the revenues and showing comparisons from 2017 all the way to the 2022 proposed budget. It'll also show expenditures by categories. And again, if you look at those expenditures by categories, what you're going to notice is that there's 24% increase in personnel and benefit costs. If you look at the rest of the line items that are in the budget, and staff did a tremendous job on this, as you're well aware, it pretty much kept, you know, the line. There were no increases in other line items categorically. It's really just the increase in personnel, and then cost of living and benefit increases. Here's a look at the complement of the general fund. And you can see that we've increased the complement here in 2022 by the 1.7%. There's actually a little change from the community development and shifting over to the EDA. That kind of offsets the 0.025%. Revenue by categories, this is where we really need to take notice on to it. You can see 56% of our revenue is based upon the property tax. And an additional almost 20% is in our governmental, local government aid. You can see that we have a very high dependency on those two factors. The other item, the other financing source, that 10%, is what earlier today in the workshop that we kind of discussed, is actually those transfers that are coming from primarily the enterprise fund. So right now, we already have a dependency of 56% on property taxes. Expenditures by category, you can see personnel and benefits, you know, 64% of our costs in the general fund are related to our personnel costs. Expenditure by departments, you can see police is by far our biggest, at 43%. But if we look at collection of that with the fire and code, you know, we're looking at a 57% is for public safety. And that's really where a city should be investing their money into. And then followed, after that, is really the street maintenance or public works. This slide will show the total levy debt service. And you can see that it's just under $1.4 million in debt. It'll also show when those final pay years will be. And so we have some time before all of the debt will sunset. This will show kind of an illustration of, later on tonight, we'll be passing the levies. And if a median home in the city of North St. Paul had a 3.1% increase, where our levies at 5.99%, they should see approximately $66 increase or 7.23% increase in their taxes from 2021 to 2022. If there was no value change, they would see a $31 increase or a 3.46% increase, again, with that 5.99% levy increase. HRA and EDA property tax levy, again, both of them are being proposed to be set at the statutory maximum. Combined, there's an increase of $32,000. The HRA maximum levy for 2022 is $205,000, 8.7% increase. It's used for the student-built housing program, future land acquisition and residential development, monitoring existing home improvement and energy loans, staff wages, and associated expenses. The EDA maximum levy is going up to just under $201,000, again, an 8.78% increase. It's for future land acquisition programs to promote economic development, staff wages, and associated expenses. And here you can see that both of them are, each one of them is raising a little over $16,000, again, combined just under $33,000. The impact of those on the HRA and the EDA, again, if we're using a median value home with a 3.1% increase, and they have a levy increase of 8.78%, it'll have an increase of just under $5, $5 or a 7.66% increase from 2021. If we were to use that property with no value change but the 8.78% levy increase, it would have an impact of about $2.5 on the property, resulting in approximately a 3.9% increase. There's some additional information, just to kind of show here. I had referred to that in the cities and towns of Ramsey County, we're averaging a 6.74%. You can see the different levies, and we're, the city of North St. Paul here is at 5.9, St. Paul is going 6.9, New Brighton an 8%, White Bear Lake 9.6, Gem Lake and the White Bear Township. And this will, this, this will illustrate the tax change on a median value, single-family home. This information was provided by Ramsey County. It'll show that 3.1% increase on the median value home. The tax change for the county should be approximately a 4.2, city 7.2, schools 7.4, others 7.9, and overall 6.4% increase or a $207 increase from 2001. Again, this showing the commissioner districts in Ramsey County and the city of North St. Paul, seeing residential taxes increasing about 4.3%, commercial staying about the same, and apartments increasing about 2.1%. Again, this, this will show the different shifts of what they can anticipate percentile-wise and dollar-wise of what that, of the tax impacts will be for the city based upon our 5.99% levy for the general fund, and the 8.78% increases for both HRA and the Economic Development Authority. And you can see that most of the, the majority of the properties will see between a 0 and a 10% increase from the 2021 to 2022. We, as of November 25th, we had received no calls from the public regarding the notice on, for truth and taxation. If there's any valuation, property classification, status questions, they should be directed to the Ramsey County, in the Ramsey County Assessor's Office number. And then there's a link that's provided there that they can, they can inquire on those, on that information. There's also some programs that can help residents reduce their property taxes. There's refunds to the state of Minnesota. There's a senior citizen property tax deferral. And then there's homestead applications are due by December 31st, 2021, to get your, your property, your residential property homesteaded versus a non-homestead status. And with that, I conclude and look forward to if there's any questions from the residents and/or the city council.
Any questions for Dan? Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, I want to thank you, Dan, and your staff.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dan? Now, I, again, I thank you too, because you jumped into this position midway through our, our cycle here. So kudos to you and the staff in working together and putting this together. I know our, our new city manager, who's actually in the audience, is, will be happy to have your team on board, working for it. So thank you for that. So at this time, we will have the public hearing. We'll open up the public hearing at 7:30 here. And if there's anybody in the audience who would like to address the council, they can do so at this time. Is there anybody online who? We have nobody online. So I will close the public hearing here at 7:30 at the same time. We'll actually make it 7:30, you wanted to make it look like we had a minute. So we'll close the hearing. And then we have resolutions in front of us. And let me, just give me a second here, because this packet is pretty big, and I gotta get these resolutions in order here. So the first one is the resolution adopting the final 2022 general fund budget and setting the final 2022 general purpose and debt service levy. Is there- Is there a motion? Moved by councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next one is resolution adopting the final 2022 tax levy for the North St. Paul Economic Development Authority. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Cole.
Second.
Second by councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next resolution is resolution adopting the final 2022 tax levy for the North St. Paul Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Motion for that.
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. And I think that's all of them. Did I get them all? Got them all. So public hearings are all over with. We set the budget. So Dan, thank you again for your presentation and working your due diligence to getting this done for us.
If I may just have a moment, I want to thank city council for your support. As I came in the middle of the budget process, you were very helpful, you asked very good questions, it was a very good dialogue. I do look forward to next year, because I think we'll have some very stimulating conversations. I want to thank Brian as being the interim city manager. He's been a great leader and has been a very good coach for me during this time. And I very much look forward to our new city manager. And I think we're going to really shake this city up and really have a lot of fun, so.
With that said, interim city manager, city business and action items.
Thank you, Mayor. First up is a TIF note assignment related to contract for private development with MNI Home and Tax Increment Financing District. And that will be presented by Michaela Help from Baker Tilly.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Michaela Hewitt from Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors, here to provide a brief overview of the action item before you tonight, as well as address any questions that you might have. Also wanted to let you know that the buyer of the note, the assignee, is also in the audience if there's any questions. So again, just a quick summary. As background, the city did enter into a contract for private development with MI Homes in December of 2018, related to the redevelopment of the project site referred to as Anchor Block South, and allowing for the construction of the new housing units. The city did establish a Tax Increment Financing District number 4-7 to facilitate financing a portion of those costs. And the tax increments from that district were pledged to the developer in the maximum amount of $3,050,000 to finance a portion of the extraordinary soil correction and acquisition costs. Pursuant to Section 7.5 of the agreement, MI Homes intends to sell their interest in the TIF note to the buyer, which is NSP TIF LLC, and has notified the city per its request and intentions in a November 17 letter. So the action item before you tonight, there's a variety of documents and it pertains to that transfer of the TIF note. And included in your packet is the original request from MI Homes for that TIF note assignment, the collateral assignment of the TIF note from NSP TIF LLC to their lender, Tradition Bank, as well as the assignment of the TIF note, the city Estoppel certificate, the TIF note purchase agreement. And then lastly, related to the contract itself is a certificate of completion as an exhibit of the agreement required to indicate the developer has completed the minimum improvements per the terms of the agreement and is also included within the Estoppel certificate. So that's a very brief overview. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Michaela? We are so close to MNI being complete. I would say next few months or, I don't know if that's a true statement or not. And I can't remember your first name. Hate to bring you up. Yep, you may. Come on up.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the city council. My name is Steve Schwanke. I'm with, we were the developers of the property. Inland Development Company Partners is who I'm with. And we, in effect, did the development work for MI Homes, who actually ended up being the builder on the property. So we do this many times. We've worked with MNI Homes for many years, have this kind of arrangement with them throughout the entire metropolitan area. And I just wanted to, I mind, not quite in the next couple of weeks. It's been a very, very successful project from my perspective, anyway. I hope the city views the very same thing. I know MNI Homes is very excited about it. We're very excited about and very pleased with it. So unfortunately, no, I would guess, Your Honor, to complete everything, probably about a year yet to wrap everything up and complete. And you know, this is getting all the landscaping done and complete and complete, complete, but another year, though. I do want to use this as an opportunity. Now, some of you I haven't met, we're not in the city council. We started this in 2018. So this, which is about a typical length for this kind of project. Some of you I haven't met, for those who were here at the time, it's been a real pleasure. I just absolutely want to say it's been a real pleasure on our behalf and on behalf of MI Homes to work with the city, not only at the beginning, back in 2018, but all the way through the process with your staff. We've been very, very pleased and it's just been a great pleasure to work with you and thank you very much.
It's been a great relationship and I think the product is wonderful down there. Looks really, looks really nice.
Thank you, Your Honor. Our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for, other questions for Michaela? If not, we do have a resolution approving the assignment of a tax increment revenue note.
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Thorson. Second by councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Michaela, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for bumping me up.
Yeah, you didn't have to sit through all this.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. City interim city manager, Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up is the 2022 city council meeting calendar. I will turn that over to our city clerk, Jenny.
Actually, I'll turn it over to city councilmember Thorson.
Yeah, so the reason I pulled this, I was just concerned over it saying that the HRA will not meet on a regular basis, just on an as needed basis. And I thought that the agreement was that meets at least quarterly. So I think, just wanted to put that out there, that we would, you know, schedule that to meet quarterly, like the first meeting being in March, either the first or second meeting in March, March 1st or March 15th, and then continue on after.
And then we should also add that we would meet if need be also. It seems like there's a lot of things that come up that we need to have a special meeting. So bear with me while I get that. So it'll just be a motion to approve the schedule.
There is a resolution in that?
I don't know if there's, I'm not going to go back and look. I just want to approve that schedule according to those changes.
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Thorson, second by councilmember Wong. Any discussion?
If I may?
Yep.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the calendar aligns with our new city manager's schedule as well. I believe he sent a note. Yeah, there were two dates that he was unable to make. Come on down, I guess.
I was going to wait till the end of the meeting, but no. And we did get that email and I, you know, fully approve of it, but I think it's something that, yes. John, welcome, welcome.
First of all, I want to thank you for this opportunity. I'm really excited to get to know the community, to get to know the organization. And I'm really looking forward to rolling up my sleeves and helping you, helping the staff, helping the community achieve its vision of what it wants to be. I can tell you that early on, the ratio of questions to answers is going to skew heavily to the question side, so I hope you can bear with me during that. As you mentioned, I looked at the city council schedule. I also looked at my city manager professional agreement that says that the expectation is that I'm at all city council meetings, which is understandable. I had a couple of conflicts that I let you know about. My perspective is that I would designate somebody to be an acting city manager if I were to be absent in that way, so I wouldn't expect city council meetings to change for that. In the future, I'll do my best to schedule around city council meetings.
I think that's appropriate. So yeah, we all approve of that. And can I wait for you to join us January 3rd?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So approve the schedule as stated with those changes added to the HRA, and then we'll accommodate those two, I think it was two dates that he couldn't make. And he'll appoint somebody to be at that meeting. So motion to approve that. And I think we had, got the motion from councilmember Thorson, second by councilmember Wong. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So good. Thank you. Interim manager, Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up is the North Suburban Access Professional and Technical Service Agreement. Can I turn it over to councilmember Thorson for his questions?
Yeah, so just wanted to comment on this. I, you know, I understand that we don't technically have a city policy that states that every single city function, meeting wise, be televised and archived. We've had some discussion about it, but I think, you know, I would like to see EDA meetings, Parks and Rec Commission, the Arts Council, any other meeting that may come up that's of public interest included in this. You know, agreement that they're televised in the spirit of being transparent and offering residents an opportunity to engage, or you know, at least participate. If they can't be here physically, they can watch remotely or, you know, go back at their leisure and watch. So that's all. It was just a comment on, you know, hopefully in the next year, we can have discussion about that and, you know, I understand if there's disagreement on the council, but, you know, put it to a vote and then move on. But I hope that in the next year, we can discuss that potential on adding those items on this contract. And that was it.
Are you saying you want to add those to this contract or you just bring it up for discussion for?
Yeah, I will bring it up for discussion in the future. I mean, I, when I was reading through this, I mean, I thought that the direction from the council on our last discussion that we had, even though we didn't vote on it, there's no resolution, there's no city policy, that all meetings be televised and recorded. And obviously, reading through this contract, it's only covering city council workshops, city council meetings, HRA meetings if they occur after. And even down at the bottom of the schedule, it says they're to be determined, but generally there's four, so when we meet quarterly. And then planning commission meetings. That's the only thing that's included in this contract. So my hope is that, you know, in the future, we can add those other meetings to this contract. I understand it's going to have an increased cost, but, you know, since we left the Washington, Ramsey-Washington Cable Commission, and now we're taking those fees on ourselves, it falls under that realm of what we need to spend that money on, so.
So we'll leave it as stated and then discussion later in regards to possibly adding those to the contract. So motion to approve the North Suburban Access NSAC Professional Technical Service Agreement as noted here, as stated here.
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Second by councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by...
I gave it to Lisa.
Well, they both, I heard it at the same time, so I'm going to give it to Cole. Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Interim city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up is the police vehicle replacement with SIP funds. I'll turn that over to councilmember Thorson.
Yeah.
Just questions?
So I, you know, I apologize for being absent the last meeting. It briefly got discussed about a change to the vehicle replacement. But from my understanding, originally, when we discussed this, the proposal was from the police department was to purchase four, are they still called Ford Explorers or they just reverted to a police pursuit vehicle, the PPV? But it was like a hybrid Ford Explorer, PPV, they're, you know, gas, electric and all-wheel drive, I believe, is that, that was originally what was discussed. And now, just seeing this, I see there's an F-150 PPV and then a Dodge Challenger. So I just was curious as to why we're going that, you know, changing that.
Sure. Well, you know, like everyone in any organization, we're all different shapes and sizes. So the, it's a Charger, actually, is one of the items. That's going to replace the Taurus, which is no longer available to purchase, so just keeping it a sedan option for our officers. And then the F-150 is due to a different size of officers. On the other end of having a sedan, the F-150 is a bigger vehicle. And then it also provides us with the option of, you know, there's frequently calls for found bicycles. And with all the equipment in the back of an Explorer, they don't fit the best. So having a pickup truck is really going to provide us an option for providing the best service based on all the different calls that we get.
Is the, I'm assuming or hoping that the F-150 is four-wheel drive option?
Correct.
Okay. And the reason I bring that up is because several years ago, we purchased two police pursuit Chevy Tahos, but they weren't four-wheel drive. And I believe the reasoning was because to have the four-wheel drive capability, lose that high-speed pursuit rating or, you know, whatever.
Sure.
So they were basically useless in this time of year, in this kind of weather. And actually, one of them got totaled right away, too. So I'm just hoping that that doesn't happen again, A, and then B, you know, I just was just asking, inquiring as to why the change was, but it seems to make sense. And we'll have to trust your judgment on that, so.
I appreciate it. They're actually cheaper with these, the different options. The Explorer's actually the most expensive vehicle, but it is a well-seasoned, functioning police vehicle, so.
Great. Thank you.
Since we have the chief here, any other questions for him? Put him on the spot.
Appreciate that.
If not, the motion or the resolution is to request purchase of four new 2022 police patrol vehicles. Moved by councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I just wanted to mention that the last council meeting, we did have discussion in regards to try to get some of these vehicles passed sooner than later, only because of you had kind of requested to get the ball rolling sooner than later. And maybe, I couldn't really explain it that night at the council, but I know that you had that request and, and are you still finding that to get these vehicles might be difficult?
I'm hoping not. I think now, I mean, I'll act tomorrow due to your approval of them, but it's just based on the assembly line. So eventually, they wipe away the 2022 models and they're no longer on the assembly line and then you can't purchase. and then you can't purchase your vehicle. So we have to let them know that we're intending to make the purchase of these vehicles before they're off the assembly line. I think we'll still have enough time now with your approval, so I appreciate that.
Is this a good salesman working you, or is it?
Well, you know, the Ford, the Ford dealer, we had a little more time. It was Dodge that, yeah, I was a bit concerned about, so I think we're still good.
No, and I, we see it out there. You go to these lots, and they're all empty, all these new vehicles. So it's, it just blows my mind, because you've got all the commercials for all these cars, and you can't even get them, so.
Yeah, it's tough.
Okay. Well, thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot there.
Oh, for real. Thank you.
I'll turn it over to interim City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up is the 2022 Budget and Levy Overview. I'll turn that over to Director Winnick.
Mayor, City Council Members, I actually believe the resolutions that are associated with that item actually were already adopted after the truth in taxation, so we can actually move to the next item.
Okay, so that brings us, go ahead, City Manager.
Mayor, next up is the Adopt the Revised 2022 to 2031 Capital Improvement Plan. I'll turn that back over to Finance Director Dan Winnick.
Mayor, City Council Members, you've previously adopted the 2022-2031 Capital Improvement Plan. We have another adjustment. Now, we need to get caught up to what the Police Chief approval just got there. In our capital plan, we had each of those four vehicles estimated at approximately $65,000 totally equipped. They're running at about $77,500, so the CIP plan has been adjusted to show that that is the only change that is in the plan.
Do we need a motion, then, to?
There is actually, yeah, there's actually a resolution, so we get the, we have you adopt the revised.
The motion is for resolution adopting the Revised 2022 to 2031 Capital Improvement Plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Interim Frandl. I'll just call you interim Frandl.
Perfect. Next up is Adopt the 2022 City Non-Levy Budgets. I'll turn that over to Finance Director Winnick.
Earlier this evening, you adopted the levy portion of our budget. What this item does is adopt the city's non-levy budgets, which include the Enterprise Funds, the Internal Service Funds, and some special revenue funds, including Community Center, Community Event Fund, Fire Relief, Street Maintenance Fund, and the Park Fund. And the resolution is attached, if there's any questions. And in addition, all of the budgets are located and attached to this item, too.
Okay, so the first resolution is approving the 2022 Non-Levy Budgets. Is there a motion? Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, now. Finance Director, what is the second one that we're looking for? Would it be?
That is the only resolution with that, yep, with that item that approves.
Got a lot on this.
Yeah, it's just, there's a lot of attachments that are there, because it shows all of the budgets that you've approved. There is another item coming up that we'd already spoke about in the workshop on the municipal fee schedule and utility rate schedule. That'll be coming up next.
So that's what I have here, is the next, is the fee schedule next?
Yes, correct, yep. And the fee schedule that we went over earlier in the workshop, outside of some changes as far, one, we will, I'll try to get an answer on the amusement to why it has to be increased fourfold. We may end up adjusting that, but I'll also give an explanation on that in January when you do the final adoption of it. In addition to that, we need to make sure that the park building resident versus non-resident is corrected before it gets posted. And then on page 21, that I learn how to spell release correctly.
Okay, and we'll, so there's no resolution for that? We'll have that in January.
And I will turn that over, does that, does the resolution need to be?
By ordinance? Yes, by ordinance.
So I have to approve the?
Yeah, if we're ready to act on it tonight with those amendments, we certainly can. If you want to wait to pump those in for your first meeting in January, I suspect, I mean, custom is to amend it now and have it be effective Jan. 1. I didn't review the ordinance beyond that. So if you want to make it with those amendments, I think there was a question on one of the fees, Dan, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. And that, I'll look into that tomorrow.
So we can adopt the balance, understanding that if we need to change that one, that one section of the ordinance, we can bring that back to you as just a one-liner.
Okay. The motion would be to adopt the fee schedule.
Correct.
As noted, and then with the changes.
Yep.
Is there a motion for the fee schedule?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cole. Second? I'll make that second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Turn it over to interim Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Last up is-
There's a lot, there's a lot of stuff here.
Tough one. Last one is the Park and Recreation Budget Spending. I don't know if you have any comments on that, Dan?
I do not.
I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Cole.
Yeah. My recommendation is that we table this, and for some reason, my computer went, I've, I don't have the resolution in front of me. I've got the, some snippets that are coming out of the Park Improvement Plan, but the plan hasn't, has yet to be finally reviewed or discussed with, discussed with council. So I don't know why this is in here unless there's something, Brian, that you might know. Or is, are they, there's nothing in here that I'm aware of they're looking for, for basically what, in essence, is a five-year plan to be approved?
It may have been informational purposes. Lisa submitted this to the agenda, so I guess, I'm not sure where you guys were at on that.
Okay, so my recommendations, it's tabled until after we finalize the Park Improvement Plan, and we have conversation with, whether it be at a workshop, or what purposes we use to bring forward the plan. But I would say that if there's anything that's on here that the Park and Rec needs, feels we need to move forward with now that we get a separate resolution for spending in place, at which point in time, it's going to need to go through the vetting process for, you know, planning, et cetera, to take a look at anything we do as well.
I'll ask a city attorney. Should we table it, or should we, should we just?
Well, you can table it either to a date certain, or you can simply direct staff to bring it back to the committees and work it up. I mean, do you want it back on a date certain? It sounds like there's a few items out there to be taken care of and addressed, so, Councilmember Cole, do you want to actually direct it back to the Park Committee?
Yeah, because I guess I'm unclear as to why it's here now, so I need some clarity as to why it's in front of us this evening.
So maybe rather than a motion to table it, there'd be just simply no action on it, which means it would not be approved, but a motion to direct staff to bring it back to the Park Committee to receive feedback, so that it can come back to you at a date at some point in the future.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Also okay with that?
Yep.
Direct it back to the Park and Rec.
And that's what my page looks like. It just came up blank.
Okay. I'll turn it over to interim Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up is reports for the City Manager. I guess I'd just like to say, you know, we've had a strong year, even though we've seen many changes. We're really looking forward to the new City Manager coming in. I think we got the right guy, and just really looking forward to that. And to everybody having a good New Year and happy holidays.
Councilmember Peterson. I would just like to add to your, again, you know, some of the staff members came in here during the budget cycle, you know, thinking again, Brian, you were, you came in, and really, your professionalism, your knowledge, your respect, you know, for everyone, not turning, not, I don't know what to say, but I think you handled everything with, like I said, professional and respect, so I thank you very much, and it was great working with you. And again, I, you know, look forward to working with our new City Manager. And I guess this is kind of premature, but we're thinking about possibly not having our last meeting in December. And I think with what we've had on our agenda for tonight, we've had a lot. I think we're able to cancel our last meeting as long as the bills are paid. I believe we're in a position that bills will be paid without having that last meeting.
Yes, that's correct. We've done it in the past, where the City Manager has the authorization to temporarily approve them until the next city council meeting, which would be in January.
So if it's okay with the council, and I'll get direction from the city attorney, are we able to cancel that last meeting in December? Do we need a motion to do that?
I would, because it is a meeting that shows up on your schedule each year. You put out your schedule, well, you just approved it tonight with your regularly scheduled meeting, so I think the cleanest way to do it is to make a motion tonight to cancel that December meeting. And then that way, there's no confusion around it. So I would ask for a motion on that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I'll make that motion. I have a personal reason.
So we will, the motion is to cancel the general meeting and the workshop for, I think it's December 22nd. 21st? 21st. So moved by Councilmember Peterson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will have a break the week of Christmas, so, again, kind of premature, thanking Brian, but yes, thank you very much, because this will probably be your last meeting before our new guy comes on. Anything else? That's all you have? Okay, so we'll turn it over to our reports of council commissions and committees. Councilmember Cole.
Last night, we had a meeting for the Silver Lake Improvement Association. All went well. The annual meeting is scheduled for February 7th at 6:30, and I believe they have requested that this be a Zoom meeting going forward, for, at least for the interim. So we'll need some help with staff getting that set up. I see Carrie shaking her head, so I appreciate that. They did have one question that I wasn't able to address, and that's the status on the airator of Silver Lake. I know there's been conversation between Ramsey County, Maplewood, North St. Paul, funding conversations, so just at, they're just concerned that it's going to go in before everything all ices up. I don't think they care who pays for it. We do, but that was just a question that I couldn't answer. So that was the only thing that came out of that. I don't know, I'm looking at both of you, if either one of you know anything. Ron's shaking his head one way.
I talked to Morgan today about that, and he was going to follow up with Ramsey County. Oh, I'm sorry, you stood here.
There's Morgan. I didn't even bring you into the loop.
And the public who's interested in this item. The agencies are still working out the details of future agreements, which will formally define the arrangement. My understanding is that the airator goes in after the lake is iced over. So you have to cut it in, actually, and that Ramsey County will be taking care of that with North St. Paul Public Works maybe observing and trying to make sure that that's happening. So I've asked for an update from Ramsey County staff in terms of where are they at with the agreements, confirming the, you know, meetings between the two public works, so that hasn't happened yet. But, you know, I guess it's fair to say that the collaborative arrangement between all the parties, Maplewood, Valley Branch, Watershed District, City of North St. Paul, and Ramsey County is in progress.
Wonderful. Thank you. Next EDA meeting is the 14th at 3 o'clock in the Sandberg Room. The Park and Rec is having a very rare December meeting. It'll be December 15th at 3:30 in the Sandberg Room. The sole purpose that I'm aware of is to discuss the Park Improvement Plan, so that they can bring finalization to the plan, giving enough time, hopefully, for the EDA to do a quick review at their first meeting, and then bring it forward to council, you know, in a workshop following sometime in January or early February. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong.
Yeah, the Arts and Culture Commission had met the first Tuesday of this month, and currently, they're reviewing the processes in which, you know, they'll intake different projects. We had the Veterans Park Organization come to kind of discuss a potential project down the road, so there's already great interest, and they're moving along just fine. I think Chair Sonic is doing a wonderful job moving that forward. And we had to discuss canceling the Fire and Ice, because parks canceled Fire and Ice, so Arts and Culture will not be participating in that.
Not that I'm aware of.
Hmm?
Not that I'm aware of.
Oh, really? It's canceled.
Really?
Because of COVID.
Okay, I must have missed out on a heck of a meeting, because I'm, I'm not aware of it, because we discussed-
Having.
Having it as well, and so I guess I'll make some follow-up phone calls tomorrow.
And I haven't seen any, I haven't seen anything advertised.
Nor have I.
So I'm assuming it was canceled, but we'll check.
Yeah, staff had informed us that it was canceled, and so we wouldn't move forward from the Arts and Culture Commission on that particular project. from the Arts and Culture Commission on that particular project. In terms of the planning commission, I was absent this last Thursday. However, they did review the sign ordinance. Morgan Dolly was also there reviewing some of the parking we had discussed on Seventh Street, whether it be diagonal or, or parallel to the curb. They'll continue with the sign ordinance and move along on that. And then for the redevelopment master plan, I'll defer to Scott Thorson, Councilmember Thorson, to add his remarks there. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
I just got a question for you. I know at the joint meeting that we had with the EDA and the planning commission, one of the requests that was asked was if the planning commission could take over the downtown, what do you call it?
Seating arrangements.
Yep. Have they done any, have you talked about that, or are we able to pass that on to the planning commission?
I believe the planning commission has.
Has it on their?
Included that in their, their agenda for the next few, few meetings.
Okay.
If not, we'll make sure that it's there.
Good. Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, the League of Minnesota Cities, it was a big hit. I got to highlight the city, and I got to dress up like the snowman.
Dress up like the snowman, or you were the snowman? Okay.
I was the snowman. It fit me. I was that's pride. I put the whole outfit on, and I filled it out good, but it was, it was fun. And they got a pick out of it, and then I needed them all to make little snowmen on all this drawing, and it was fun to see all these adults with these crans. So the mayor's, I did, I gave a little prize, and so that was good. So then I thought I was done, but they asked me to be like an ambassador, so I'm going to continue to serve. I'm going to Apple Valley for city visits. I'm more than honored to do that, or do that personally. It's more of a listening, kind of a listening thing, but I'll be going to different cities throughout the state, because I've got time to do it. Is it not working? Hello? It's on.
There's two of you.
Okay. So I'm kind of excited about that, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Thorson.
Can you hear me? Okay. The redevelopment master plan committee met last Monday, or maybe it was two Mondays ago now, and we just had continued discussion on updating the plan. Kind of a lot of the, the core of the discussion was, you know, we're at the guiding principles and kind of went through those and how we're going to modify or, or change the WSB, forget her name, maybe Morgan, Brandy was there, taking lots of notes, and she had made a comment that there's just a lot of good discussion. She got a lot of good feedback and direction from the group, so we're, the next meeting is going to be the last Monday of January. I don't have that in front of me, but it'll be at 6:30 here at City Hall.
I just want to mention the ED, or the Veterans Committee, we did go and talk to the Arts Council, and we're looking at a possible project down at Veterans Park in regards to, it's called Freedom Rock. It's giant boulders that are artwork that will be placed within the, within the park. So we're going to work with the Arts Council on that, and we'll know more in January how that relationship is going to be. General business, Councilmember Cole.
I just received notification from the co-chair of the Park and Rec, the Fire and Ice has been canceled for this year. Evidently was done any non-meeting, and it's done due to COVID, so that was, I just needed clarity. It was, it's like, I didn't miss the meeting, so. I just want to take just a couple seconds. This is, with no meeting in two weeks, this is the conclusion of year one for both Councilmember Wong and myself. Wow, a heck of a year. If this is normal, holy buckets, look, good luck, John. I want just to take a couple seconds to thank Dan for stepping into what you've stepped into mid, you know, mid-budget season, stepping up, bringing a lot of new and great ideas. Continued positive accolades to your staff. Your staff has done a fantastic job, and you've done a wonderful job as well as far as bringing praise to them as far as the council's concerned. Brian, I got no words, man. You've stepped into a hell of a show and stepped up, and thank you. That's it. I'm done, man. The year's over with.
Good.
Three more years.
Councilmember Wong. Wow.
Just one more update in regards to the committee and for the community center. We are looking for a short term at this time, and hopefully we'll see that on the agenda in January. As for other general business, I think, you know, possibly reviving the Environmental Commission in 2022 could be a discussion for us. And then just want to, again, thank the staff for this wild year. I truly have no words, but it's been incredible to see everyone come together and work very fluidly and communicate and have a lot of trust. That's very evident, and you can see that in the morale and staff, so thank you all for, for all that you're doing, so. And a Happy New Year.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, I want to do a shout out to Rachel Thompson. She was, she adopted 20 families for Project Christmas Tree, and she would have gotten more, but, you know, she, it's limited, so she's got all the family she needs, and I think she's got a few tags that people could sign up for to give, and that's another way that the community is, you know, giving back, because there are needs out there. You know, we have the churches, and she's just a resident that decided to do this last year, and it was very successful, so very, thank you, Rachel.
And she was on TV again?
She was on TV, and it puts us on the spotlight and, you know, that we, that we're givers here, we're not takers. We're a good community of volunteers. This is a little off the cuff, Joe Emerson, White Bear Lake mayor is retiring after 12 years. She's kind of my mentor, so I want to wish Joe a great retirement.
I thought I was your mentor.
Well, yeah, you are. You are. But, no, she's always encouraged me, and, you know, when things were kind of rough here, she'd be my sounding board, so it was good to have that, kind of a sisterhood. Okay?
Oh, yeah.
You're like the brother I didn't have. Okay.
Thank you.
The Centennial Ribbon Cutting was a great event. We all went, and it's a beautiful building, very nice. There's people living there, and it's, it's a very nice addition to our main street. And I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year, healthy New Year. Thank you.
Councilmember Thorson.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo the council's statements, and thanks for, Brian, for stepping up in this role. You've done a great job, and thank you, as well as Officer Rosales when he stepped on as interim, interim police chief. And thanks to all our staff and, and our contracted work that we have, WSB, Campbell Knutson, we thank you for all the work that you do for the city. And thanks to Dan for stepping in and, and doing a good job, and, and the finance department, so thank you. And Ron's in the back. Thanks for your work in the public works.
Sure.
I think that's everyone that's here. Oh, Carrie, thank you very much for all your work in the communications. Maybe you can get these mics figured out, though, huh? I mean, I think maybe it's time we just give up and get some new ones. And Jenny, thank you very much for all your work you do here. So being this is the last meeting, we're just looking forward to a new year, and wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Good. And I would concur with, with all the staff, the rock stars coming in and helping out through this year, because it was, it was a difficult year for, for all of us, not only staff, but I believe the council itself. I welcome our new city manager, you know, he'll be starting January 3rd. No one said, thank you to our city attorney, he's, you know, thank you for, thank you for keeping us out of trouble, you know, so I just want to add that, but the holiday hop was this last week, and I did have the pleasure walking with our new city manager down the, down the avenue. He met a few new people. Thank you, Councilmember Cole, for joining us, but it was a good, a good turnout downtown. I believe the trolley ride, I mean, I got to go on the trolley ride, it was fun. The Historical Society had a record amount of people in the, in the Historical Society that, that day, over 100 people went through. I guess I would like to just mention, you know, my goals for next year is working with the council, like Councilmember Wong said, you know, let's work together, we're a team. Get trust, you know, put trust in, and what I'd like to do also is have a workshop or retreat as, as always, you know, as sooner, sooner in January, the better. Like to work, possibly having the city attorney work with us along with our new city manager, and working with all the committee chairs, just to get the roles of kind of what our, what our committees and commissions do, and how that relates to how the process works. We have a lot of questions throughout the year. I know we're, some chairs have questions in regards to their role and how it relates to different items and how it's brought to the council, and so I'd like to have that as part of our, as part of our retreat, if, so, and if you're able to be a part of that.
Sure.
That's all you got?
You're sorry.
Just tell me when.
Okay. But I think that's, I think that's been a kind of an issue in regards to some of the chairs and how, how it just relates to their role in regards to how it gets communicated to the city council.
Yeah, it's, it's a good thing to every once in a while, just do a level set and check in on these sorts of things to make sure that committees are kind of staying in their designated lanes. Sometimes there can be creep into other categories, and it's good to just say, here's the expectation from a council level. These committees ultimately do report to you, so they're a function of, here's what we would like to see you be working on. You know, beyond that, one of the things, I think I'd taken a note, there was a discussion about one of the committees going to Zoom meetings. That is something I'll talk to staff about tomorrow. The way we used to do it is not how we can do it going forward. The rules have changed a little bit on that, so I will, I'll update staff on that also. But sometimes it is good to just check in, maybe even cover some of the basics, just a refresher on open meeting law, data practice, stuff like that, but, yeah, whatever, whatever we think we need in terms of figuring that out, let me know.
Okay, good. Thank you. And I wish everybody a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we'll see you in 2022. So at this time, a motion to adjourn. Nobody wants to, nobody wants to.
Second.
So moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.